Welcome everyone, I'd like to call a special board meeting, our town hall meeting, sort of to order. And thank you all for showing interest in the village and coming out and hearing about the results of our survey. This is an ongoing process for us. Not only are we going to share the results of the survey, but we would like any input or reaction to some of the things that you'll see tonight, some of the things you'll hear. We're using all this as gathering information in order to go into our strategic plan at the end of the month. We're going to have two sessions with the board. We're going to use all the information we got from the survey, what we get from tonight's town hall meeting, and we're also going to do this again on Saturday, November 2nd. And we'll take that into our strategic plan and then we'll also use it for our budget purposes. We are being taped today so that we could put this on, not only as a link on our website, but it's also going to go on Comcast. So just to let you know, and we do have cards on that table with pencils. If you have a question, if you could please write it down on the card. If you want to, you can also add your name, and so we can contact you later if we don't have a complete answer. Jason Bolowski's standing in the back there, and Missy Brito over here are going to be the ones collecting the cards during the presentation, so that we can put it, lump them together and I can, I don't have to repeat questions, okay? So I'm Gail Smolinski, I am the mayor, and we have our village board here tonight. Carrie Dastrum, Ron Baker, Wayne Domke, Barb Hochstedt, Andy Maglio, Patrick Devitt, and our village clerk Patty Burns. The way we're going to work it is I'm going to do about a half hour, 35 minute presentation on the survey results and some misconceptions that we found, once we got the survey answers back. Also, then we're going to have about a 45 minute question and answer period, and then afterwards, we should have some time that we can just mingle among you and answer questions on a one-to-one basis. If you don't want to ask a question that will be out loud, we'd be happy to talk with you about any and all of the subjects, or anything else that you might think about tonight. So, let's begin. Okay, we have not done a community survey since 2008, when we did one for our rebranding, and we reached out to residents and asked how they felt about the village. This time, we really wanted to delve into our services. As many of you hopefully do know, we have been undergoing a fiscal crisis for the last couple of years, which we have slowly gotten out of. But in response to doing so, we've had to make some cuts in staff and in some services. And we wanted to take a tenor of the community to see how you felt about that, if you had any other suggestions, what things you valued, because it all does come down to money. A lot of people say, "Well, you're only doing it because of money." Well, guess what? We need money in order to operate the village and to provide the services that you want and you expect. And so, we wanted to get a pulse of the community on what you were feeling about things. We have two trustees on the board who really worked hard on this, I'd like to recognize them, it's trustee Barbara Hochstedt and Wayne Domke. And together, they worked with Jason and Missy in order to put together the survey, to get it online, to do the compilation, et cetera. We started with the survey online, it was May 13th through May 31st. Gave residents an opportunity to answer there. We also had paper surveys down at the village hall and over at the library, and I think at the Klaus Recreation Center. We were hoping for 500 responses, and we were very pleased that we got 671 completed surveys. We had a few more, but they didn't, weren't all completed, so we didn't count those in the numbers. One thing that we really were pleased about is that the responses came from all four zones of our community. The most responses came from Zone 3, I'd like to think that's because, it's where I live, but it's because there are the most residences in that area. Zone 4 has more industrial, whereas 1 and 2 has a little more commercial. But it still was pretty evenly divided. We also had a nice response from, demographically. The majority of people answered were between the ages of 35 and 65 plus. We did have some a little bit higher and some a little bit lower, but that's where the majority came from. So we thought that we had a nice mixture of ages and zones in our community. There were some general trends that we were able to compile after we looked at all the statistics. Residents indicated that they are not willing to pay more for current or expanded services, but our board is still challenged to find revenues for the increasing costs that we have. For example, beginning in 2014, we will need to have an additional $225,000 to pay into our police and fire pensions. That's going to be our increased obligation. Yet, we only receive about $150,000 a year in natural tax growth. So how do we come up with the additional revenue? That's why we wanted to do the survey, that's why we wanted to get your input. We were pleased that Roselle residents did place a high value on the services they received. And their main concerns that you told us were fiscal sustainability, crime and safety, the conditions of streets and sidewalks, stormwater management, and economic development. We were also pleased to see that the overall satisfaction with our services was pretty high. 77% of the residents were satisfied with services, 50.8 somewhat satisfied, 26.2 very satisfied. But what was surprising to us is 68% of the residents indicated that more resources needed to be devoted to attracting new businesses. That was the data point in the survey, with the strongest majority of agreement among residents. Out of all the data we collected, that was the one that had the most resonance with all of you. And I think that was a little bit surprising for me to see that. Again, it's a village board, we need to find a way to allocate these additional monies for this function, and that may mean devoting less resources to another kind of service that we provide. Because this will be an ongoing cost, not just a one-time expense. We asked some open-ended questions in order to get your responses. Those were more subjective, the information that we compiled was really based on the objective numbers. But we found out that when we looked at the answers that you gave us and what we could do to help fiscal sustainability, we came down with five different categories that the answers fell under. A stronger property and sales tax base, and I guess that would go to allocating more resources for economic development. Enforce revenue generating services, share resources with other taxing bodies, develop a community volunteer program, and encourage sustainability in the community. I think it's interesting to note that one of these, which is the enforce revenue generating services, seemed to be something people were willing to happen, unless it's a phone call I get when it happens to you. So I thought that was interesting that they wanted, we wanted more parking enforcement, more speeding enforcement, but we do get calls when that happens. But that was an interesting part of the survey. We talked about customer service, and we found out, how do residents come to us and interact with us? Majority do it through face-to-face contact. In-person was number one, people use the Dropbox, they use online, postal mail, and direct debit. And out of the people that came into the village hall to conduct business, 66.3% of those indicated they conducted business at the front counter and they had an above-average experience. So it's a thank you to all of our staff that is at the front counter, they work very hard to try and answer questions and to give good customer service, and I think the results show that they're doing a great job. When we moved on and asked your feelings about community development, out of all the residents have had to come to the village and either get a building permit from something as simple as a shed, all the way up to a garage, or in addition, 93.5% received adequate information on the process and how to get through it. We talked about code enforcement, and about, a majority of residents thought that we had the right amount of code enforcement dealing with garbage containers, on-street vehicle parking, and overnight vehicle parking. However, we did have mixed messages when it came to other code enforcement, parking of recreational vehicles, parking of vehicles over the sidewalk, and tall grass and weeds. Some people were very adamant that we make sure we enforce it, others said we're doing too much. Now, for years, the village has enforced all these on a complaint basis, and that sort of created an unfairness throughout the village. You could have your RV parked in front of your house for the whole winter, and if your neighbors didn't mind and never called it in, we didn't enforce that. Yet a neighbor three blocks away, they could, they could get a call the next day and have to move it. So what we've tried to do, to be fair, is to take the ordinance that people seem to care about, we get the most complaints, and some of those are the parking over the sidewalk, and the weeds, and the RV placement. And we hired extra code enforcement to go out and do it on a proactive basis, instead of just a complaint basis. We really wanted to get away from turning our residents in as police on one another, and try to do it uniformly. So even if somebody might not be happy with the ordinance, if they know it's being done fairly throughout the village, I think it's a little more palatable. We go back to the 68% of residents who felt that economic development was very important. I will address this more in depth later, but these are the bullet points that came out, to attract new businesses. And this came in second, after the fiscal sustainability. Attracting new businesses was a top choice among residents as a service that needs more resources, and a majority of course favor restaurants and retail establishments. Over the course of the years, since we started our downtown project, well, actually, some of the first studies, and we do have a resident here who was part, one of, part of the town center plan in the 70s, Tony, or, in the 70s, that we have done studies about what our residents want, and it hasn't changed, retail shops and restaurants. So that's a constant in our community. Talked about public works. Most respondents feel that public work services are being performed at an adequate interval. We do have, the top three most important issues were public infrastructure, which is streets, sidewalks, and sewer. We got above-average ratings on the reliability of our drinking water, sanitary sewer service, snow plowing, salting, and the conditions of our streets or landscaping on public property. Residents were also happy about stormwater management, street maintenance, and the condition of sidewalks. When we went on to the police department, I thought these were interesting statistics. 55% of our residents said that crime and safety is a major concern, yet 92.3% said they felt safe and secure in their homes. So when I looked at that, what I took away from it is that our residents feel safe in the village, but they want us to make sure that our police department remains vigilant so they can continue to feel safe. With 83% of our residents indicating they're satisfied with police services, I think that our police department is doing a good job in that area. In our fire department, 75% of the people were very satisfied or somewhat satisfied with the service provided. But interestingly, this is the only category where there was a large number of people who didn't respond, and we've, we've assumed from that, is that they've never had to use our fire services. So if you've never had to make a fire call for a paramedic or a fire in your home, you wouldn't have any action, interaction with our fire department, so that's why we have the 22% of people who said they didn't know. I would imagine if those 22 people had to have contact with our fire department, that 75% would be up with the police department, because they also do a good job of providing We wanted to ask about special events. Sometimes we do help fund these, we wanted to see how important they were to residents. And you can see, these are the top four special events, that not only do people attend, but that they would come back and attend again. Taste of Roselle being, of course, the largest, with the Rose Parade following cruise nights and the Rose Festival. So I don't think that any of us are going to cut those out during our next budget session. Communication and outreach. Other than the village's own publications, residents responded that they were also getting information about the village from two sources. The most important was the Daily Herald, and the other one was my neighbor across, across the street or next door to me. But the majority of people that got information from the village did it through our village newsletter, so we had 94% of the people who got information from that, 67 from the website, and 59% from our e-news. So if you haven't signed up for e-news, please do so. We send that out weekly, it's a way to get the most up-to-date information on things that are going on to you, or it's also an opportunity for us, if there's a special message we need to get out immediately, we send it out through e-news, and you can sign up online. So our survey conclusions showed us that there are three, we think, major themes. The first is that our residents understand the need for fiscal sustainability. We have, we have done a much better job, and we have come a long way in the last five years now, from when we started in 2007 and '08, when the, there was a downturn in the economy. So fiscal sustainability is still very number one with our residents. They also want us to do economic development, since we, they don't want taxes raised, it would be, economic development as a way to increase our tax base and grow our revenues to continue to provide services, or maybe even provide extra services. But the other thing we got out of this is citizen engagement. And it is because of that, that we're holding these meetings, that we will want to continue to do this, because we found that there were a lot of misconceptions. When people are allowed to give an answer to, "What should we do about fiscal sustainability?" and someone said, "Cut the fat," we realized we still had some more education to do, because I will tell you in a few minutes what we have done, in order to get to fiscal sustainability. And we want to make sure that you, as residents, understand everything that's going on, and that we communicate as much as we can to let you know what we are doing, to be responsible with the money that you give us, and the services that you want us to, to provide. But again, there are some clear misconceptions out there, so we're hoping that this forum, having it on our channel, and then other forums like this, will, will dispel some of the myths. And that's what I'd like to go into next. This was the results of the subjective data, these were the comments that people made when you had a chance to talk about some of the things that concern you in the village. And the first is, why doesn't the village do more to reduce spending? So we collected this data, it's an open-end question, and our response is up here. Since 2009, the village has reduced our full-time employees, our full-time workforce by 20%. We started off with 116 employees, we're down to about 94 full-time employees. Reducing employee benefits and wages, we have done that. We have been able to create a two-tier system, where new employees being hired on are starting actually at 5% lower than other employees had been hired. We got the whole pay scale, and we just brought it down about 5%, which was huge, huge. Most communities haven't been able to do that, we were able to do that. We did that with our non-union employees, but we also did that in the bargaining agreements we had with our current unions. They agreed that any new hires would be starting at a lesser pay, and that really helps us not only now, but also helps us in the long run. We also worked on wage, on benefits. We have, we've revised our way we handle sick days, the way we handle vacation time. All those are helpful to our bottom line, long-term. Mandating unpaid employee furlough days in 2010 and 2011. Unfortunately, at the time, we could only do this with our non-union employees, and they did sacrifice, I believe it was one a month, Jeff? One, one furlough day a month, unpaid, to help us get through our fiscal crisis as it was occurring. So we're doing our budget this November, and I would encourage each and every one of you to come back on Mondays in November, and sit and listen while we deliberate. Out of a $14.8 million general fund budget, that's our operating budget, 90% is directly related to employee costs, personnel costs, whether it's salaries, benefits, or the ancillary things that are needed to provide services, fuel, electricity, heat, fuel for the cars. All those together, it's 90% of that, of that 14.8% budget. We don't have a lot of discretionary income. So I hope I never hear someone say, "Start to cut the fat." We never were fat to begin with, we might have been a little pudgy, now we are lean, and we are very lean, we're down to the bone. And we want to make sure you understand that, because when we make decisions, and you're upset about a program that gets cut, or maybe a response that isn't as quick, we have cut personnel, we just are not staffed as much as we used to be. Next misconception, why hasn't the village done more to fill the empty storefronts along Main Street and Irving Park Road? So I'd like to begin with maybe just a little bit of history of what our Tiff District is. Tiff District is our downtown area, it was created in 1990. There had been a number of studies done, starting from the 60s into the 70s and the 80s, recognizing that our downtown needed help. The assessed valuation simply was not growing. But what we needed was a financial vehicle to make something happen. Enter the Tiff District, which we created in 1990. The Tiff District was designed, and I think many people don't understand the reason for it, it was designed to get rid of the obsolete buildings that we had downtown, buildings that if we hadn't done anything, would have been empty storefronts, and some had already been empty storefronts for years. And also to increase the assessed valuation, not only to the village, but to the other taxing bodies in the area. Assessed valuation is what we get our tax money on, and it simply wasn't growing. So we established the Tiff District in 1990, at the time, all the taxing bodies together received $30,000 a year. And that would be the library, the Park District, District 12, School District Elementary 12, High School District 108, and the village, top five. $30,000 a year. We ended the Tiff District last December, that assessed valuation is now $1,450,000. We were able to open up Main Street and connect our downtown with our west side of town, and we were able to bring new buildings in, and we created opportunity. That's the role of the village, to create the opportunity for people to come and rent and have storefronts. So it really is an unqualified success. At the beginning, we had some very unusual stores. We had a gourmet store, we had an ice cream and candy store, we had a Polish deli that also had a little grocery in it, we had a creative arts studio. But unfortunately, 2007 happened, and some of those stores didn't make it. However, we still continue to talk to retailers, whether they're national retailers, franchises, or independents, to try and generate and make sure that we are developing our downtown. However, all we can do is to create the interest and maybe offer an incentive, if it's property or if it's a business we really want. We did offer an incentive to 8,000 miles, in order to get them there and have the build out. We probably would not offer an incentive to another hair salon. But if the private property owner wants to put in another hair salon, there's nothing we can do to stop that. We have zoning categories in our downtown, they're permitted uses, and if someone comes in and wants to establish a permitted use, we don't have any legal recourse to say no. We hope that the private property owner who owns the property, who sets the rents, uses some smarts about who he's going, what kind of a tenant mix he's going to have, but again, that's not under our control. And I think some, some people think that the village should lower the rents, and we should get people in there. That's, that's not our job, that's not something we can do. Again, we made attractive buildings, we created permitting process that's very easy, and we have some incentives for uses that we want, and that's about, that's what our job is. We also hired a company in 2012 called Mallon &amp; Associates, to study not only our downtown, but our whole village, to find out exactly what he thought, after, after doing some market research, of what he really thought would work in the village. And guess what he came up with? Restaurants and retail. So picture, the picture hasn't changed. And hopefully, you see downtown, you see our downtown, Roselle Flowers has expanded, Laying Your Eye Care and All Things Woof, they bring people to our downtown, they bring foot traffic there. We have a wonderful restaurant now, and Restaurant 1913 will be opening up in a few weeks in the old place that Empeka was. So the one thing that is constant, is that change is inevitable, and we will continue to change and to grow, and to work to attract the kinds of things that you would like to see in our downtown. I do have one word about Trader Joe's, because whenever there's a vacant space, we do hear, "Why don't you get a Trader Joe's?" That happened recently when Pickwick left town. Well, that would be a perfect place for a Trader Joe's, except Trader Joe's doesn't agree with that. The space was too small, the parking was inadequate, and they've told us that our downtown demographics aren't what they're looking for right now. Does that mean we're going to stop pursuing them? Absolutely not. We're going to go after them in other areas of town where we might have space available. So we will continue, be assured that we will continue to try and attract the quality things that you're looking for. And if it doesn't happen, it isn't because we haven't tried, it's because they've turned us down. A lot of people ask, "Why doesn't the village do more about flooding?" Our biggest flooding came in Quadrant 2, that is the area that we're in right now, it's the area that is south of Irving Park and east of Roselle Road. People want to know, can we put up more retention ponds, do a better job of cleaning up the sewer system, change, change rules on stormwater management? And this is interesting, build a larger stormwater processing facility. So just, let's break it out, we'll do stormwater first. The village has just adopted the 2013 DuPage County Stormwater and Flood Plain Ordinance. So it establishes new rules and regulations, and anytime you're going to put in 2,500 square foot of impervious surface or more, that means paved surface, you have to provide stormwater detention on-site. So some of the largest single-family homes that we're seeing in the village, they have to provide stormwater detention on their property, and that is a change from what it used to be. The ordinance used to say it was silent on single-family homes, we couldn't require that. So we're hoping that by this ordinance, we will be improving as we go along. We're also always looking for areas that we can put in some retention ponds. One area we're looking at right now is property that the village owns at the corner of Turner and Roselle Road. It's vacant a lot right now, we're hoping that we can add maybe some detention there to hold it upstream from, from down on Foster Avenue. And up in the north, Heather Green Pond, we'd like to enlarge that, to help with the flooding that we have up there, and that's up at the El Geno Hair Expressway and Arthur Avenue in that area. So we are always looking for ways that we can, we can help stormwater. We don't have, stormwater is handled through our stormwater pipes and our ditches, we don't have a processing facility for that. However, there are going to be some rules and regulations about when it leaves our community through the stream, we have to make sure that we haven't added anything to it that shouldn't be there. So we have to look at different ways of using best practices to maybe have native grasses in certain areas, so that it cleans the stream as it goes through our village. Those are ongoing things that we are working with Public Works on. Now, storm sewers, oh, the other thing is, one way that you can help us is that, a lot of people I see, when they're cutting their lawn, they put their grass clippings out on the street, or they blow their leaves out onto the street, those end up in our gutters, the rainwater comes, it takes it, and it goes into our storm sewers. It clogs those pipes, sometimes it clogs the grates. So if you see in your, that your street is starting to flood, and your grate is covered, just rake the leaves off the grate, so the water can get down there. And don't leave the leaves in the street, your own personal leaves from your house, so that they don't go down in the sewer, and that way, there's less water that can go down there. So we would ask your help for that. Now, as far as our sewers, the village does own a sewer cleaning truck, it's called the Vector, and if you've been to the Rose, Rose Parade in the past couple of years, it's usually the last big piece of equipment that comes down to clean anything up on the street that has gone before it. We use it whenever we are not working on our sewage treatment plant, or working at our lift stations, we have our crews going down, and we are cleaning out our sewer pipes regularly. Right now, we're putting, doing an expansion to our Devlin Sewage Treatment Plant, it's going to cost about $5.5 million that we're putting into that plant, major upgrades to it. A few years ago, we built a holding tank in front of that plant. The holding tank was during a storm event, what we were finding out is a lot of groundwater was getting into our storm sewers, and forcing the waste up through our residents' basements. Not a pretty sight. We wanted to try and figure out, how could we, what could we do to stop that from happening? We built the holding tank, the water rushes in, and it's held in that tank until the sewage treatment plant calms down, and then we can send it through in a timely manner, and have that sewage treated before it goes out into the, into the, into the river. We also have spent, in the last probably six or seven years, millions of dollars, and I'm thinking three or four million dollars, to replace our aging sewer pipes, to make sure that those pipes don't crack, and you don't end up with sewage in your homes again. So we continually do things like this, spend a lot of money. So when you look on your water bill and you see that little CIS at the bottom, it's called capital improvement surcharge, the money we get from that is what we use to make these improvements, both to stormwater and to sewage, to keep our village nice-looking and safe. Another misconception, why doesn't the village do anything about poorly maintained properties? Okay, this gets back to us hiring another building inspector, a code enforcement officer, to go out and to try and make sure that we have a level playing field, that everybody is maintaining their property at a certain level, so that our property values remain high. Where we have a little problem is when it's a property that's been foreclosed and it's owned by a bank, sometimes we don't even know that there's a problem property in the neighborhood. And a perfect example is a house right around the corner from me. I finally had a neighbor knock on my door one day and said, "What are you going to do about that house on Brandywine?" And I go, "What do you mean, what am I going to do?" "Well, it's been abandoned for a year." And I said, "Well, I didn't know that, it looks great." "Well, no, we've been cutting the lawn, we've been, we've been taking care of the outside, but it's been abandoned, and we didn't know because they never told us." The water pipes had broken in there, when I went around to the back of the house and I looked in, it had mold growing up the walls, it was, it was really a horrible mess. We were not aware of it, though. So if you do know of abandoned property, or a home that's vacant, please let the village know, so that we can at least get the water turned off. And then we do, if we know about it, and it's a problem, we work with the banks, we work with the mortgage companies, who's ever holding the title on their property, we do try to work with them as best we can, it's not always easy, especially if the mortgage company is not anywhere near us, to get them to come in and clean up. Bottom line, if the grass is bad, the least we can do is we have a Boy Scout troop that we contract with, we send them in there, and they cut down the weeds, they cut the grass, we pay them, and then we lean the property, and we'll get that money back someday when the house is sold. But there are things that we can do. Again, we do have more code enforcers to try and enforce our codes on an even, on an even basis. And what, the other thing we've done is to make it easier for people to comply and Instead of getting a ticket that is a couple hundred dollars and you had to go to court, we have a local ticket that we write a lot of these on, and it's like a $35 charge. And if you aren't happy with it, you can come to court right here at the village and protest it. So we think we've made it a little easier, a little more palatable to pay the ticket, and maybe a little easier to get compliance. Our last one, why is the village spending so much on personnel? Can't the village lower or eliminate pensions? Offer 401K retirement plans? Hire more part-time employees? And consolidate services? We have done many of those things. Again, the village is a service provider. Seventy-five, well, 75% of the budget goes toward salaries. 90% of the budget goes toward salaries and all the ancillary things that come along with it. We've reduced the workforce by 20%. We have hired on part-time employees to do jobs that used to be full-time. The pension system is decided by the state of Illinois or IMRF. Those are separate entities. We cannot just go ahead and make a 401K plan. That's something that has to be done by the state. And we have been working with the state since 1987 to get them to change some laws and rules and regulations for pension plans. So we haven't given up. I'm still here, and I'm still bothering them about it. But it's a long process and it has to come through the state. We have done things like shared services. In fact, I, I chair the task force with the Metropolitan Mayor's Caucus to look at service delivery and how we can make things different. The villages of Clarendon Hills and, what's the second one? Hinsdale, were recently to the point where they were going to consolidate their police force, have one police force for both communities. They got the communities in agreement. They figured out how they were going to do it. They were right at the finish line. And they found out that they could not marry the two pension systems because they each have separate pension systems. And so that stopped the consolidation. So I'm supporting Representative Patty Belloc. She understands the problem. She's trying to introduce legislation to take away the impediments that would allow us to do some common sense consolidation of services. We want to make sure we're still going to provide the same amount of service or even better than you're getting. However, we have a lot of duplication in our area. There are more ladder trucks in DuPage County than there are in the city of Chicago. There's just something wrong with that picture. We need, if we can't do a functional consolidation, then certainly a consolidation of equipment so that we can share our resources and we each don't have to have our own little fiefdom. An example is DuCom. We went to, we went to combined dispatch, and there are some people who still would prefer that we had it here. But we're saving $250,000 a year by doing that. In addition, we actually got a better level of service. There are more than one dispatcher on duty when your call comes in. So if you have a medical emergency, the dispatcher can patch you over to somebody who is trained to talk you through the problem while they take the next call. And the person can stay on the line with you until the ambulance gets there. That's a level of service that we never could have provided here in the village. So we have, we have done a lot of these things. And we continue to look for better ways to, to deliver our services to you. So those are some of the misconceptions. Hopefully, I gave you some information and the information that we had on the actual survey itself. Again, as I said, we're still collecting data. We do want to hear, hopefully, you've filled out some cards with some questions. And Jason can go around and collect them. I can get a drink of water before I have to talk some more. And we'd like to answer your questions and your concerns and your thoughts about things that, since you filled out the survey, maybe you've thought of a way or something that you wish you would have said in the survey. Please write it down so that we can share it with everybody. Again, we're being taped and we want to make sure all the comments get, get on the record. Thank you.
Does anybody need a card or anything, or pencil, if they have a question?
Now, at this point, I, while I'd like to think I have all the answers, I don't. And so if there's a question that I can't answer adequately, we do have our, our staff with us. We have Jason, who's our assistant. We have Jeff Odell, our village administrator. Oh, boy, Greg Kramer, our interim Public Works Director. Chief Heron from the Police Department. Chief Tenucci from the Fire Department. Deputy Chief Roma Tarcella. Pam Fagola, our Finance Director. Pat Watkins, our Community Development Director. And Bob from Community Development, Bob Zimmer from Community Development. They're all here to help us out with the answers. After we're done with the questions, then, we'd love to have you stay. I'm planning on staying. I know a number of trustees are, again, to have a one-on-one conversation with any of us. Like to have a chance to meet you, find you, find out why, you know, why you came, what you're interested in. We're just happy that you're here. The first one, how will the Lake Street Corridor help Roseau's retail income? And what about increased traffic along Gary and Lake as a result? Gary is controlled by DuPage County and Lake Street is controlled by the state. The state does have plans. We're not sure exactly when, but they do have plans to widen it and to make the area between Bloomingdale and Hanover Park look like the east and west parts of, of Lake Street. They haven't really done anything. They're going to put a median down the middle like they have over, if you go through Addison, if you go into Hanover Park, that's what they have planned for Lake Street. That will make it safer. There will be limited access. So we will have to work very closely with them to make sure we have adequate lights, adequate turning lanes so that our businesses on, hopefully, eventually either side of the street will not suffer from it. Our plans are, we have a boundary agreement with Bloomingdale. And the boundary agreement goes to the first side street going south. And I can't remember the name of that street. So all that frontage on Lake Street from Gary Avenue going up to public storage will, will come into the village. Public storage already is in the village. And the big company that used to be Case International, can't remember the new name of it.
Hayworth Baker.
Hayworth Baker. That is also in the village. So we're really looking for a great opportunity between Hayworth Baker and Gary Avenue where Woodland Windows is, to bring all that into the village someday. I have been in talks with the owners of Woodland Windows. They would like to come into the village. They would like to redevelop their site. And we have extended our water and sewer lines across the street in order to accommodate that. So we are ready. Whenever we can get them to agree and come in, we are ready. And Patrick, Community Development Director, would you like to add?
There is, from the standpoint, that the county has become involved in this. As a village, we've attempted to do some things in the unincorporated area on the south side of Lake Street because we recognize the artery there is a huge and significant one. The problem we've had is we can't forcibly annex those folks. You have to surround them in Illinois in order to make them come in. So what we get are those less-than-desirable users despite being on a road with high-traffic counts, great visibility, access from communities very far away, South Elgin-on, use that corridor. The county has started a study where they're looking at the commercial nodes. The last part of that study will be, okay, how do you bring about change? And they're looking at the right uses. We're going to be more interested in what's the catalyst? How do we actually turn this area into a desirable area? Make some of those properties clean up? Make some of those properties consolidate so we get those ideal uses? They're expected to be done with that study this year still. You're going to see early quarter of next year involving the village board and the mayor trying to get with the county to look at a unique approach in an attempt to actually make this a catalyst, get something done on Lake Street.
Anyone else want to add anything? Okay. Well, here's one that we can all chime in on. What does the villages stand on a potential stormwater utility? We have talked about this. And at the time, we said that we were not interested, and this was maybe about three or four years ago. It still remains something out there, especially if we are going to be required to treat stormwater as it comes through the village, as a way to handle the costs associated with that. However, the board at the time did not have the palate to do it. DuPage County is also looking to put on a stormwater utility. And I would think if they're going to put on a utility, then we're going to make sure that the people, that the money isn't just spent in the unincorporated areas and the people in the incorporated are going to be able to share in that. But does anybody else want to share their thoughts on a stormwater utility?
Well, they're controversial.
Oh, yeah.
I know that they implemented them in, they implemented it in Downers Grove, and it's controversial there. But what it does provide is a new revenue source for taking care of things that live underground or an older community. You know, the, the pipes underneath the ground, some of them are 10 feet even deeper underneath the ground. And when they fail, it costs a lot of money to dig that up. Sometimes there's trees on top of it. There's a man here from the Trails. We had that happen over in the Trails Village or in, on the, on the one side of the Trails. I mean, there's, there's all kinds of stories. This is an older town. If you live in a newer town, you get to pay all kinds of taxes to build your schools and build everything brand-new. When you live in an older town, you've got all these pockets and cavities and, and problems that, that need repair. And there's no fooling anybody. It has to be paid for. So it's an interesting thing. It's definitely something we'd have to have a lot of public engagement, I think, on to have it be considered properly. But it would be a new revenue source. And we don't have too many new revenue sources. We don't have too many ways to balance the budget. We're not a home rule community. We can't provide, we can't implement taxes on visitors. There's a lot of things we cannot do. A stormwater tax or a stormwater utility is, is an option if things get really tight. I think it's something that future boards would have to take a look at.
And one thing I can say, that if we would even decide to seriously consider it, it would be the subject of public hearings. It would have to be something we would bring out and vet into the community and get a lot of feedback from a number of different people before we would even, it wouldn't be something you'd wake up the next morning and it's on your tax bill. So it would be the subject of public hearings, which is why you need to sign up for E-News and make sure you go online and read the village newsletter. We did have a resident just had a comment that I know this doesn't concern the survey, but visibility at many intersections have limited, many intersections have limited visibility because of overgrown tree branches. Is there a way to get residents to trim back so that one doesn't have to pull out onto the street to check for oncoming traffic? I think this is an excellent suggestion. Our interim Public Works Director is here. He's hearing us saying this. And if you would, especially afterwards, let one of us know which intersections so we can address those immediately. This is something we try and look for all the time, and our crews do look for that. But apparently, we've missed some. And so if you could let us know what intersections those are, we can go out and work with the homeowner to trim those, those bushes or those trees back and help the visibility. Okay, it says, "There has been, there is a complaint that the village hours are difficult for people working. There are no evening hours. She suggested staggering the staff so there would be evening hours past 6:00 PM." This, this is something that we really had to think about when we were looking at the 20% reduction in staff. And one of the ways we were able to achieve that is not to have, is to have limited hours. We looked at the amount of people that were actually coming in between six and seven or six and eight, when we used to be open on Monday night. And if we had five or six a month, that was a lot. And it, there just didn't, it didn't seem to be cost-effective to have people here. We don't ever like to have just one person working. To have two people here for six or seven people a month to come in. Pam, do you have anything more? Pam is our Finance Director. She's in charge of the front counter and the staff.
We did look at the number, the activity that was happening on Sunday or Saturday mornings and Monday evenings. We felt really comfortable, the handful of people that were coming in each month, that we were providing them a service in another means. Maybe it's electronically, you know, by mail. So there was really very little, there isn't really anything that we can't do that we're not be able to do by mail. So I would like to encourage anybody to call downstairs at the front desk if they do have a problem or if they need some kind of a service that we're not able to do or we're overlooking, to please contact us.
Would it be possible if there is somebody who, who has a problem that's not easily done by mail or by phone call, they need to come in and talk, say it's a water billing problem or a payment problem? Would we be willing to have an appointment that's a little bit later if that's the only time they can get here?
Oh, absolutely. I'm always available just about any evening of the week. Even though we do close early on Tuesdays and Wednesdays, we are still downstairs working. We're always happy to, you know, meet with anybody on those afternoons also. We do provide a lot, some of the services that we used to provide down at the front counter have been, they are being provided by other businesses or locations, government entities or whatever throughout the village. But yes, if there's a need to come in and meet with us or a special appointment, I'm always happy to meet with businesspeople or the residents.
Okay. This, this one suggests we should open a bingo hall. Don't think we haven't talked about that. Why do people get pensions at 55 and can still work? Sounds like double-dipping. Freeze wages. Everyone should get money at 65, pensions and social security at 65. Change ages for pensions to 65 like my social security is. This has been a problem with a lot of the pension systems that are government ones by the state. And this is why we work to try and change some of this. It is fiscally unsustainable for us to pay somebody a pension at 50, at 50, because that's the earliest age that somebody can retire. And then to pay that, and then should they pass away, their spouse gets that pension all the way till, till their end. So some people can be actually drawing on pensions longer than they ever worked for the village. And that, to me, is the definition of unsustainable. Unfortunately, again, we don't control that. That is set by the state. We have gone down there numerous times. When they lowered the age from 55 to 50, the retirement age, we said, "Stop. Leave it at 55." We didn't win that battle. So these, these things, I pledge to you that I will continue to push for changes in our pension systems and especially its police and fire that have some of these benefits. I don't want to hurt our police and fire. They're, they're good people and they, they provide a great service. But the pensions are just not affordable for all of us, especially if some of us, we lost our pensions. We don't have them. Or we have 401Ks. I wish we could go to a defined contribution program and the state, that has to come from the state. That's where it's centered. Now, IMRF is a little different. That's a municipal retirement fund. And Jason, could you tell us a little bit about how, how, what's the retirement age on that? And how many years do you have to work? Because I'm not quite as familiar with that one.
I wish I was a lot closer to retirement than I really am. So I may not be the best one to speak to it. But certainly, there's, from the point, and to kind of elaborate on what the mayor spoke about, the state has done some initiatives more prospectively in dealing with retirees, limiting secondary employment opportunities, limiting some of that quote-unquote "double-dipping" for people moving forward. So there are some new limitations built into, into the pension funds as the downstate legislator's kind of trying to recognize that issue that, that the public is dealing with. Generally speaking, retirement age, obviously, you can retire at different ages and you have a different type of benefit coming in, just like social security. You can go early and take a penalty. So it's really no different than the other pension funds. But IMRF, your kind of normal retirement age would be at 35 years of service and I believe 55 years of age without any type of penalty. For police and fire, it's an early retirement age. It's a minimum of 50 years of age and 20 years of service in order to get your minimum pension. You potentially could go earlier with some penalties. You can go later and get a greater benefit. But certainly, the police and fire, retirement age is really based on the work that they do do. Now, I don't know how many people want, you know, potentially 65-year-old or 70-year-old police officers or firefighters. So there is a mandatory retirement age built into those plans. But from the IMRF perspective, which are your non-public safety positions, the typical retirement would be 55, 60, or certainly older, depending on when they started and how many years of service they do have. But it max out at 40 years of service.
Okay. Richard?
Yeah, the other thing with IMRF and I collect from IMRF is the village may not be responsible for all, in other words, if you put in 12 years in Roseau and 12 years in Bloomingdale, Roseau's only responsible for 12 years.
That's true. And that is the difference. That's why there's more portability if you are an IMRF. If you are an assistant manager here and someday you want to be a village manager, you can leave and you carry your pension with you. you can leave and you carry your pension with you. It's one pension system. For police and fire, the only way for them to, they can't carry their pension with them if they go to another community. So they pretty much have to retire out of one community before they can go to another one, and then they start another pension over there. So if police and fire had a pension system like the rest of the municipal employees where it was portable, it was one system, that would stop some of that.
They can buy it.
That is the way it is, and you're right, that's a good point. We only have a certain portion, depending on how long you've, you've worked here for the village with that. And just to the interest of full disclosure, there was a question before in a slide, and I think I didn't, I missed it. Someone asked about pensions for elected officials. There are only two elected officials that have the ability to have a pension, and that's the village clerk and the mayor's position. You have to work at least 1,000 hours a year, which is, comes out to about 20 hours a week in order to be eligible for a pension, so none of the trustees have that much time and they are not part of the pension system, so the village clerk and the mayor are. So I just wanted to make sure everybody knew. Any other cards? Anybody just come up and have, has another card? You guys are being very easy on us tonight. I do, this card I saved for last, you always save the best for last, it says, "Thank you for the survey and for the town hall meeting, I appreciate being asked my opinion, and thank the board for all of our hard work." So thank you very much, whoever said that, we, we really appreciate it.